I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It is Monday, October 10th, 2011. Dr. Richardson, are there agenda changes?
Yes, if you look in your table file, you'll see that there are several items. First of all, there is an announcement. There will be a closed negotiation session that'll be following tonight's board meeting, and it'll be held in the district office conference room. We also have an additional item on the consent agenda, which will be the ALC Annual Trip to the Boundary Waters. And then we also have information for you on the October enrollment report. And I'd like to share with you just briefly the information on the guest editorial in the Northfield News on the Northfield School levee.
Okay, very good. If there's no objection, we'll add those items to the agenda as we move forward. We have now opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who wishes to address the board, we ask that you speak from the podium, state your name, the group you represent, if you are here speaking on behalf of a group. And we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. And I would like to remind people that this is not an opportunity to -- is my mic not on?
I think you just need to pull it closer.
Okay. Okay. I would like to remind the public that this is not an opportunity to engage in debate or dialogue with the board, but really a listening opportunity for the board. Is there anybody here who wishes to address the board? Okay, see no one coming forward. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular meeting held on September 26th, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
I found one.
One, Eric.
Okay, do you want to second it and then make the correction?
I want to second to make a correction.
Okay.
In public comment?
Yes.
It says morale instead of moral.
Oh, yes, very good. Typo.
Just wanted to get that fixed.
Okay, very good. We'll fix that typo. With that typographical correction, do we have a vote on approving the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson.
Okay, I have a couple this evening in terms of announcements. First of all, I would like to recognize the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative. And again, our school district has been working closely with them over about the last eight months in terms of looking at strategies to support getting information out to parents and students on cyberbullying. And so, over the summer, they put together the concept of the video public service announcement contest on the subject of cyberbullying and responsible technology use. And they had a number of videos up that individuals could vote on. Our top vote getter was a video called "That Losing Goal," produced by Hannah Bubser and Samantha Roback. The panel of judges made up of school district administrators, students, HCI board members, and members of the mayor's task force on youth alcohol and drug use also suggested a judges' prize. That award goes to Zachary Anderson for his video, "Words Have Power." The following individuals also received honorable mention for their technical merit and relevant content: Connor Balfany, CJ Betcher, Kyle Betcher, David Greer, Seth Hanson, and Chen Yi. All other video finalists will continue to be available on our school district's website as well as the HCI website. They will also be aired on Northfield Television and shared with local parents and students throughout the Northfield schools. Again, our hope is that these locally created video messages will continue to inform and educate students, parents, and community members about the importance of responsible technology use. And again, we were very pleased with all of the finalists' videos and very impressed with the work of young people in our community that put together these pieces to share with their fellow students and parents. We also have a recognition tonight for our Northfield Middle School. It's one of five Team Up, which stands for Teaching English Language Learners Action Model to Unite Professionals. Lots of words. Schools in the state. So, a group of our middle school teachers have been participating in a two-year-long grant project with the University of Minnesota. This Thursday, October 13th, from 5:30 to 8 o'clock, there will be a Team Up parent night, and all interested parents are invited to come to learn in a bilingual setting, English and Spanish, about how to use family access to set up free email accounts and other helpful tools for parenting middle school students. So again, a two-year-long effort on the part of middle school staff to put together and provide support for students and parents at the middle school.
Excellent, very good. Anybody else have anything to add? Anyone? Okay, on we go. Our first item for discussion and/or report tonight is we have Ryan Krominga, who's the new director of Art Tech. Welcome, Ryan. He's here to give us the annual report. Art Tech's in its eighth year of operation, and as you know, we sponsor Art Tech and have since its inception. So, welcome, Ryan. We're looking forward to your report.
Thank you. All right. I want to thank you for letting me come here tonight, and thank you for all of the support over the last eight years and going into our ninth year of being our authorizer. So I want to start with that right away. The mission of the Northfield School of Arts and Technology is to prepare students to transition intellectually, emotionally, and ethically to higher education and future We go on further to say that the Northfield School of Arts and Technology envisions a learning community that encourages and assists students to express themselves artistically, use technology responsibly, creatively, and with innovation, develop critical thinking and creative problem-solving skills, construct knowledge and meaning for themselves, understand and strive for wellness of their whole person, recognize and act upon their responsibilities as local citizens within the global context, and achieve proficiency in project-based learning. I wanted to start with that for those people that aren't as familiar with Art Tech about what our mission is and what we strive to achieve. I'll tell you a little bit about me since I'm new to this position. I took over the position for Simon Tyler, who's moved down to Prairie Creek. I'm a licensed mathematics teacher, and I'm working on my administrative license through the University of Minnesota, both as superintendent and principal's licensure. I helped start Art Tech in the fall of 2003, and I've been teaching there for seven of the eight years. And I continue to teach a math class in the morning. I taught previously to that two years at Lakeville High School. And then I've received my undergraduate degree from Minnesota State University, or otherwise known as Mankato State for all those people that went there. I got a master's degree from St. Mary's University. I took over the director position on July 1st, and I got married on July 2nd. So, it's been a busy year so far. So what I'm going to do is go through some highlights for the annual report. I hope everybody's been able to get a copy, maybe peruse a little bit. If you have any questions, please ask during the presentation as we're going through. But I just want to hit a few highlights as we go through that, and I try to do it in the same order as the annual report. So, the first area I wanted to look at was demographics. Being a charter school within Northfield, students that reside within the Northfield School District that go to Art Tech, last year was about 75 percent. In the previous years, between 80 and 75 percent is where the remaining students are coming from outside the school district, so they're coming from Lakeville, Fairville, all the way from Owatonna, Prior Lake, and the Montgomery-Lawnsville area. So, in addition to that, some other demographics to be aware of. Art Tech has, this last year, we had 23 percent of our student population that was in special education or in IEP. And we always seem to hover around that quarter of the school population. That's not unheard of for charter schools as well, that have a higher special education Our student enrollment, I put the last four years, last year we had 118.45 ADM. This year, we're projecting around 121. We've always stayed around that 120, and that's grade six through 12. We have a cap of 126 students, that's about 18 kids per grade. That fluctuates a little bit per grade depending on sibling preference and stuff as they enroll and as they come in. But we tend to be around 120 to 121 students for ADM for the year. We also have a number of students that do PSL, post-secondary enrollment options, and that also, that student that is not counted as much in our school district. So, we tend to be in that 120 range. I wanted to hit a couple areas as you go through the annual report. Our high school program, for those people not familiar, we do have 23 credits to graduate. Those credits based on Minnesota State standards, so we also have students that need four credits of language arts, which is approximately four years. The same science requirements, credit of biology, and now a credit of physical science as well. Mathematics, three credits, including advanced algebra and so on. The additional credit that we have within our 23 is that we have more, we require more students to get art credit. So we have 2.25 art credits that students are required to get. In our middle school program, we also do a project-based approach with that with students, but it's a little bit more structured, a little bit more of a framework for students. We do a thematic approach to the middle school program revolving around a literature piece each term, and that then informs on the guided project that they're doing, and then also in their core classes of science, social studies, and language arts. So students will do a guided project within their advisory in the middle school, and they'll do that for the entire term, and then they'll present that at a presentation night as well. As you go through the annual report, I wanted to then hit the academic goals area. We had two academic goals, mathematics and reading. Mathematics is where we had a little bit of a shortfall. This last year, we split mathematics into part one and part two. We looked at grades sixth, seventh, and eighth for mathematics, and we had a goal of 66 percent. If you've read the Star Tribune, and I'm sure you guys are going through the data as well, the change from the MCA II to the MCA III, Minnesota has seen a little bit of a drop. And this actually, there is one correction to the annual report. This happened after it was published. MDE sent their spreadsheet out to show a different calculation with that taking into account MCA II's to MCA III's. So Art Tech did have 56.25 percent of their students proficient or better in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, but it's still short of the goal that we had. We had a goal of 66 percent. For part two, the 11th graders passing the MCA test and also the Minnesota GRAT test, we did increase our students' proficiency in there to 42 percent, 1 percent short unfortunately of the goal of 43 percent that we had. The second academic goal we had though is reading. And with our reading goal, we continued to keep them all together, so we had sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then the 10th grade MCA reading test as well. Art Tech scored 82.67 percent of students proficient or better on the MCA test. We had a goal of 79.8. So we went past that goal. Part of this attributed to Art Tech has been involved in QComp for the last eight years. And within QComp, the goal has been reading. Just this last year did we switch to a QComp goal of math. So we're starting to focus our staff development towards the math end of things where we had it reading before. And again, if you have any questions as I go, please let me know. I wanted to, in the annual report, MDE asked that we put as well, parent survey data as well, or start to include that as in our annual report each year. So what I did is I picked a couple of highlights from that. There's a lot more data within the annual report. But of parents surveyed, the first one I have there is 77 percent of parents felt welcome at the school. And then I just added the caveat there that we had 0 percent that marked that they didn't feel welcome at all. Okay? So the remaining 23 percent were in that sometimes or frequently they felt welcome, so that we were pretty proud of that, that there was nobody that didn't feel welcome to come in. The second one I have there is 98 percent of parents feel their student advisor creates a positive learning environment for learning. And then the third one, 89 percent of parents always or frequently felt their child has an opportunity to explore individual areas of interest. And that can be a tough thing as a teacher as you're going through because you know that students are trying to fulfill those academic standards as well. But to have that high of a percentage feel as though at some point throughout their day or their high school career, they feel as though they're able to do some stuff of their interest too. There's a larger section on innovative programs, and I just picked out three different areas. One of them is our May term. And May term to us is similar to like a college J-term, and we do it the last three weeks of the year. It's very much experiential ed. And we take those three weeks and students sign up for a full-day intensive course. And I just highlighted some of the things that we did this last year. This last year, or actually for two years, students have been working on a Minnesota Riverboat project, both in ecology, but then also they've been restoring a boat, and they put that boat in the water this year. So they were pretty excited about that. In addition to it, we always have a theater or visual arts piece of it as well. We did spectacle, which included both visual arts, theater arts, music, and movement. We had baseball, which was widely the most popular, I think, which looked at not only the history and culture of baseball within America, but also looking at the statistics of it as well. The greenhouse in cooking, and I'm going to talk more about the greenhouse in a little bit, we looked at the scientific method, and we looked at the science of cooking and then also the greenhouse that we've built on the property. And then our other one was a service learning project that we went out to Prairie Creek and worked with the elementary students on their village project. So, students had a wide variety of things to choose from. The other innovative area that I go into, and that's the arts piece, and a lot of people have seen that throughout the years in the paper, the arts at Art Tech are very important. And we continue to do some of those traditional pieces that we've had for eight years, which is presentation nights at the end of each term. We do our, what we call our shameless fundraiser, which is Thanksgiving, which we encourage everybody to come to. Imagine Telethon, that's kind of what we're going with. And then the Arts for Martin, which has become a big piece for Art Tech in the winter. And this last year, looking at that kind of culminating many of the years with, we had Reverend Fred Doty for a couple of years, and this last year was kind of a presentation to him. So it was a fantastic evening. Included in it some of the arts pieces, our students did a Midsummer Night's Dream this last year. They did a slightly different twist on it. They did it in promenade, so the audience was part of the show. And they also did it in the Shakespearean text as well. So students had fantastic time doing that. And then we've been expanding our arts with the colleges around us as well. And so last year, we did the Ragamala Dance piece that was through Carlton we did in the spring, and then as many visual arts and stuff throughout the community. I mentioned this one previous, and there's a lot of different projects that happen throughout the years. In past years, you've probably heard about the solar panels and stuff go up. This last fall, students raised money, wrote grants, and constructed a greenhouse on the property at Art Tech. And it was very student-led and very student-run. In addition to that, they planned throughout the winter and did a CSA and completed that throughout the spring, and parents came in and they got their vegetables weekly, and they learned so much. It was amazing to hear they had, through a grant, they had a farmer-in-residence, which was funny just to say, they have this farmer-in-residence. But he came out and they just had a blast, and all they talked about was what was the next thing they were going to do for the year. So the greenhouse hopefully will be going strong this spring as well. Program challenges is always something to talk about also in the annual report, and there's many challenges, but I highlighted a couple of them. And the one challenge in particular that we have is always space, and space is a commodity. This year, the end of fiscal year 2011, we entered into a new lease for our building. Charter schools lease their facilities, and we were grateful enough to have a landlord that helped us add on to the building. And he's adding two classroom spaces, so a science area and an additional arts area for us to work in. We are currently living in that construction at the moment, but will be done very shortly, towards the end of October. And it's truly, it's an expansion of space for the students we have right now. It's not an expansion of our enrollment. So the students we have are getting additional space to work in, and so we're really excited about that. The second program challenge I put there is one that is always there, and that's, on the technology side of things, there's always a program challenge with funding and trying to get enough technology and funding to get that technology in your school. And I would say, you know, with both freezes in school funding and legislators trying to battle back and forth, we're definitely in need of that area. That's a definite challenge. I wanted to touch also on school finance. As you look at Art Tech through the years, we have started to institute more and more board policies on fund balance. In particular, we have a fund balance goal each year. In fiscal year 2010, we exceeded that fund balance goal by 3 percent. And so we've been slowly adding to that fund balance over the last three years, and we will add to that again this year. Unfortunately, we met our fund balance goal for the year, and the audit is still currently in progress, but we met it for the year. But with the new lease and, you know, that piece of financial, putting a deposit down on some stuff as well, we just won't see as big of increase for this next year. But we're moving in the right direction. And then, towards the end of the annual report, staff development piece, Art Tech continues to participate in QComp. This is the eighth year that they'll be in QComp. The entire staff meets every Tuesday for an hour and a half to participate in guided staff development. And again, our goal is to enhance mathematics, so we're looking at how to infuse mathematics into all curricular.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Questions? Julie?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. And I just wanted to say that I think the project-based curriculum option for our students is a really good one, and I'm glad we have it, because I think it really gives a number of students a choice that they wouldn't otherwise have. So I'm really glad that Art Tech is an option. I was really thrilled to see that you were able to do your new lease, because when Simon Tyler was here last year, I know he alluded to that, not sure how that would shake out, and the fact that you have the additional space, I think is awesome. And to congratulate you on your financial strength that is so significantly better than last year, and we know how tough that is. And so, it was really thrilling to see, and I'm sure it came with, not without a lot of hard work. So I just wanted to note that and congratulate you on that. I know you have struggles like we all do, but it was really good to see that.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Anything? Okay, thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah Puchko will present the first of our site improvement plans, and that is the site improvement plan for the community services.
Thank you. Thank you. There we go with that microphone.
Oh, and board members, just want to remind you, we've got the --
Yes, you've got it. You've got the report in front of you, and the very last page is a copy of a recent editorial by Sam Jet at the newspaper about our program, so I thought we would include that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you for the opportunity for us to share our successes, our success story with you, based on our site improvement plan for the last year. We're very pleased to report that we were able to meet almost every single task within our two objectives. So that's exciting news for us. So you will first get the report on last year, and then we'll talk very briefly about the plan for this year. I always like to remind folks just what community services is about, and that's community education, the recreation program that we do in partnership with the city of Northfield, and then of course, the community relations work that we do with the district office and the rest of the school district. The concepts of community education really are what drive our mission, and that is to support the learning and participation of adults, youth, and children of our community. That is the entire community, everyone within the boundaries of Northfield School District, not just people in the public schools. Through lifelong learning and recreation, through citizen involvement or community involvement, we do that with advisory councils and informational opportunities and ways for people to become involved in programs, through access to school and community resources and facilities, and through the promotion of collaboration and partnerships. So much of what we do, we could not possibly do if we didn't have so many partners in the community. We talked about HCI, Healthy Community Initiative, tonight. It's a good thing we're in the same building because we really are attached at the hip. We do an awful lot of work together. We have two objectives. One is in the area of marketing, and the other is in the area of financial stability, and those two are very closely linked. One depends on the other. So in the area of marketing, our goal was to increase community awareness, increase our enrollment, increase our participation in programs and services of our division through the implementation of more effective marketing strategies. Some of our highlights, and of course, you have much more in the report, but some of the things we'll highlight tonight, our programs and services have been featured in many articles, photo spreads, and other content in the local media, on web pages, on the blogs, local community blogs, a variety of places where people are talking about what we're doing. Our total enrollment, which, the figure there is just over 9,000, almost 10,000, but that is strictly for our classes and activities that are in the brochure. So this doesn't include our childcare program, it doesn't include PLUS, it doesn't include our ESL program because we report that through a different school district. It doesn't include early childhood family education because that is reported differently. These are just the fee-based classes that come out of the brochure. And that increased last year by 7 percent, and that of course, has a positive impact on our revenues as well. But 7 percent isn't enough, so we're going to keep working on that one. Enrollment in Early Ventures, just as an example of another one of our programs where we've seen an increase because of our marketing, has been Early Ventures. And that's a program that we have, I would guess, I call it, helped subsidize through our other programs to keep it going while we were trying to become established and provide first and foremost, a childcare opportunity for the children of students at the ALC, but then secondarily, to fee-based enrollments throughout the community. And for the first time last year, we operated at the maximum for the whole year, and that includes saving a couple of spots for ALC students as we needed it. And we were also full for the summer. So we have waiting lists, and this is a program that has never broken even until now. We've always supported it through our other budgets. So that's a great accomplishment, and we're really, really proud of that. If you haven't had a chance, it's a lovely site over at Longfellow. Yes?
Can I interrupt? What is your maximum number of kids?
Just under 50.
Okay.
For Early Ventures. The kid ventures at the elementary schools varies depending on their building. Other highlights, we've had a marketing committee. It's made up of coordinators in the program, and they meet monthly, and they track, they collect data on their marketing activities, they share ideas, they go back and forth and work on each other's projects because a lot of projects take more than one person to make it happen. And so some of the things that they used this year that we found were effective. Some are low-tech, like putting up a bulletin board in every single school and making sure it was fresh, had new information all the time, and just caught people's attention. This is what's happening in this building. This is what's happening in this building for community services. And then we get high-tech, and we now have a Facebook page. And, and I look at pictures on there all the time, actually. We targeted our communication with our best customers. One of the things we know from the real gurus about fee-based programming, and that's LEARN, L-E-R-N, they'll tell you, it's all about your best customers. And so we seek out their feedback, their input, their ideas. I recently sent an email to our best customers saying, you know, you like our programs, you're interested in what we're doing, have you ever considered being on the advisory council? Within three days, I have seventeen people who are going to be submitting applications. So that's great. And a lot of people said, not this year, but keep me on your list. So we also promoted several fundraising events. We have a used Halloween costume sale, that's next Saturday, and we're collecting those right now. We collect them at each of the schools. Families like to get rid of their stuff, and then somebody else gets to have new costumes, so that's good. Our birthday party packages have gone over as a big hit. Families just love them. One of our staff people, one of our coordinators had her son's birthday party, and she said, I've already booked my date for my daughter, because they just had so much fun. And that comes out of our recreation program. A partnership we have, very small, modest operation, is with a local community group who wanted to encourage people to use Latch Park for snowshoeing, and to promote snowshoeing as a healthy activity. And it's a great family activity as well. And so they got some grants and have purchased snowshoes, and then we're the outlet for renting. And then we offer classes on how to snowshoe. So that's been a great thing. And then we cross-promote programs and services. And what that means is, we make it easier for you as a customer. If you're going to be enrolling your child in summer kid ventures, but you also want to go to swimming lessons, well, we do the swimming lessons. We also make sure you have your bus pass, your transit pass, so that we can get you to the swimming lesson, so you can register for childcare, you can pick your enrichment activities, and you can register for swimming, all in one transaction. There's our Facebook page. I didn't figure out how to get that screenshot. Somebody did that for me, but people in the office would understand why I didn't do it. Young participants here in this picture are enjoying a day at Princess Camps. Now, that sounds pretty funny and frivolous, but they actually do arts activities and, and reading and things like that. But it's a suggestion that came from our best customers. So we said, okay, well, let's give it a shot. So that's Princess Camp. As you read the article by Sam Jet, he talks about, well, who comes up with these ideas? And we have a lot of ways we do that, suggestions, comments from our best customers is one. But we need, we must stay current with trends and community interests, or we're going to be behind, behind the crowd, and people aren't going to be taking our programs. So we want to stay fresh and appealing and popular with the community. Last week, I got an email from a customer who said, I've been so pleased with Northfield's community services. She and her family had recently moved here. And she said, from the programs offered and the quality of the staff, it is top-notch. And she had other things to say, and we chatted, and it was, was a great opportunity. Our second goal, objective, was financial stability, and that is balancing the revenues and the expenditures so that we end up on the right side of the fund balance column. And so we have a nice chart about fund balances, too, and that's a good thing. And doing all of that in, in tough economic times, everything people do through community services, they do by choice. Nobody says to a thirty-year-old, it's time for dodgeball. It just doesn't happen. So we are, we've tried flag football leagues for adults, too. But if it doesn't fly, we try something else. So some of the highlights there, and we've really been doing the belt tightening for a couple of years, very strenuously. In addition to increasing revenue due to the increased enrollments, we also raised just over five thousand dollars in increased ad sales. In the brochure, we sell advertising space, which also gives people in the community an opportunity to know about all their choices. And also raised funds for our scholarships, because we, of course, provide a scholarship to anyone under the age of eighteen. But we also saved almost twenty-eight thousand dollars by reorganizing how we were doing business in several areas. So we had a large savings in, in just our operational expenses. We came to the board twice last year with revisions to our budget. As things change, as trends move up and down, if we can have a month-to-month accurate picture, we can control our budget situation much better. And so that was one of our, our monitoring devices that was important for us. And these measures have resulted, and more things besides, have resulted in an estimated fund balance, and we'll hear that from the auditor whenever that happens. We will see a positive fund balance of thirty-five thousand dollars. And so this chart shows you that it has been since 2008 that we had any kind of fund balance at all, and that was pretty meager. Thirty-five thousand is not where we want to be. We want to get that much closer to a hundred or better. But we're going in the right direction. So really want to credit everybody who worked so hard, really sacrificed, really became creative in making that happen for us. So our site improvement plan for this year is to do exactly the same thing. Keep focusing on marketing, keep focusing on financial stability, and continue to come up with ideas that can help us generate interest, generate activity in our programs. And that, that will actually be a three-year plan, as you can see from the report. As community educators, and that's what we call ourselves when we work in community education, we value lifelong learning, community involvement, maximizing our school and community resources, and the facilities, whether it's indoors, outdoors, computer labs, libraries, whatever it is, and we believe in building collaboration and partnership. And this just little photo album, the little boy and his dad up on the top are, that's from ECFE class. I think somebody's going to recognize a couple of chess players there. Had some real hot tournaments last spring. Bottom left is a group of preschoolers in hand-in-hand. That's over at Longfellow. Right now, we have seven sections. And then the bottom right is lightsaber dueling. And that is probably our, sorry for the pun, it's our hottest class. Kids just love it. Kevin, excuse me, Brent Kivell teaches it, and it was his idea, and they absolutely have a ball. And Longfellow Jim is perfect for it. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Hannah. Julie? Thanks for your presentation. You always knock it out of the park all the time. But I wanted to ask you, can you talk a little bit about the Our School Today software?
Yes.
Because I know it's really exciting, and I want to just understand a little more.
And I will say this for the benefit of the people back at the office, we know that all transition with software has its challenges. And so we're in the midst of some of those challenges right now. We had really hoped, for example, that we could have all of the childcare parents signing up and just using their credit cards and making this so simple, and the company is having some transition issues themselves. So, but the idea is that it is the same calendar software, and ultimately, the same purchasing software that we'll use in all aspects of school district business with the public. So you can use that same credit card for activity fees or whatever. The rest of the district isn't, I'm looking at Matt, because that's his baby. But we forged ahead last year, and it's taken us a little longer, but ultimately, we'll be able to serve the public better.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Very happy to see the financial turnaround. It's just been, you know, something we've just looked at so carefully for these many years, and it's great to see that trend line going in the other direction. So kudos to you for that.
Thank you. And I really want to express our appreciation to the board, because the last thing a community ed program ever wants to do is, is be in a position where we're causing financial concern to the rest of the district. We all know, you know, how challenging it is, and so community education really needs to make it on its own. And so giving us the latitude to have a couple of years to pull through that was really supportive, and we appreciate it.
You do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report, our first item for individual action is a resolution providing for the sale of general obligations, school-building refunding bonds, and so on and so forth. And I believe we have a representative from Ellers, our financial advisor's here, to walk us through that. Welcome.
Thank you. I have a handout. I'm Jeff Seeley, by the way, on Ellers.
Thank you.
Hi. How you doing, Jeff?
You're welcome.
Could you give us the lead of the vendors?
I've got three left, so it's perfect. And I hope I didn't give mine away.
Oh, sweet.
Messes, sir.
Maybe you could just reintroduce yourself, so it's on the mic.
Yes, on the mic, and then you'll be ready to go.
Okay. I'm Jeff Seeley. I'm the financial advisor from Ellers. And what we want to talk about tonight is a refunding of some of your bonds. And what I handed out was what we call a pre-sale report for this series of, or issue of bonds. And I'm going to turn to page one, and the proposed issue is a ten million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar general obligation school-building refunding bond. And we label them the year, and if it's the first issue, it's A, so it's 2011A. And the authority is through the state statute, chapter 475. The bonds are general obligation bonds, which basically means that the school is pledging its, its full faith, credit, and taxing power in order to raise the funds to pay these bonds back. The purpose is to issue an advanced crossover refunding. Okay? So it's an advanced crossover, first of all. With any bonds, when you issue them, you identify the call date, and that is the time that you can refund them, with one exception. One time during the life of the bonds, you can do an advance refunding, which is in advance of that particular call date. So you're limited to one time, and it would refund the 2014 through 2024 maturities of the district's twelve million, six hundred and forty thousand dollar general obligation school-building bonds issued in 2003. The existing bonds have rates between four percent and four and a half percent. And if you flip over to page five, I might flip back and forth a little bit. So label page five, it has the total refunded debt service on it. So let's look at that a little bit. You have a 2-1, 2013 call date, so this is in advance of that. And you can see, when, when bonds are issued, the shorter the maturity, the lower the interest rate. So you can see the, the bonds that are coming due in 2014 have a four percent, where 2024 has a four and a half percent. Okay? This is the bond that's going to be refunded. So flipping back to that purposes section on the first page, based on current market conditions, and, and they have been really volatile, by the way, they've shifted a lot, up and down in the last several months. But based on current market condition, we estimate that the refunding will save about one point two million dollars in future debt payments between fiscal's 2014 and 2024. We present value that for the cost of money, and we estimate that's about one million, twenty-seven thousand, or nine percent of the present value, which will reduce your property taxes payable 2013 through 2023. We, when we see a refunding, an advance refunding of seven percent net present value or higher, we consider that very good. The state limit is three percent, so you need to make three percent in order to do an advance refunding. Principal payments on the new bonds will be due February 1, 2014 through 2024. That matches your old bonds. The interest is payable every six months. And the bonds maturing February 1, 2021, and after are callable. So we'll build in a call date when we design these, so in a number of years, you can look at a current refunding, which is at the call date, because you're doing the advance now, and, and hopefully you'll save some funds again at that time. There is what they call bank qualification, and you have to issue less than ten million dollars in order to qualify. If it's bank-qualified, there's more buyers who, who are eligible to buy it, so the interest rates are usually a little bit lower, not a lot. Unfortunately, you're just over the ten million dollar mark, so it's, it's non-bank-qualified. Your current rating, you, you had a Standard and Poor's rating not too long ago, double A plus, which is excellent. In fact, the state rating, Standard and Poor's just lowered it to double A plus, so you're on par with the state. You're, you're above ninety-five or so percent of the school districts, what you're rating. So that's very good, very good job. The issuing process, what we'll do is we'll issue what we call an official statement, which means we'll design the structure, we'll put it out there, we'll send it to the underwriters. The underwriters are the financial institutions that will be bidding on your bonds, and we'll do a competitive bid process, as opposed to going to one underwriter and having them just buy it. And what that does is opens up the market to, well, the last one we did, we had seven bids, which basically ensures you get the best price on that given day. Other considerations, the proceeds of the bonds will be placed in an escrow account and vested in U.S. Treasuries. Those are yield-restricted, so you aren't going to make any money on it, plus if you did, you have arbitrage considerations. Basically, you'll, you'll, you'll lose money on investments, as with most investments now, but that's all taken into consideration when we determine the savings. Let's see, continuing disclosure, you have a federal obligation to, to go through or follow certain federal regulations to disclose to the purchaser of your bonds any ongoing financial issues and so forth. Currently, you contract with Ellers to do that for you. But with these bonds, it's no exception, you'll still have that obligation. You will be applying for a state credit enhancement resolution, which basically means if you default, the state will step in and pay it. Fortunately, I don't think anyone's ever defaulted. And the escrow's yield-restricted, so you won't have arbitrage issues, although you're still required to monitor it. So the date, the timeline is on page three, and tonight we'll be talking about it. You'll be passing the credit enhancement resolution authority to move forward. We'll distribute the official statement around Halloween, and then we'll set a rating call that first week in November. And then we have a sale date of November 14th. We'll bring it back to you, and that's when you'll approve and award the sale. So to look at the bonds, on page four, the paramount is ten million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand. You have an underwriter discount. How that's going to be used, ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars, that's an estimate. The underwriter, we put a maximum when we bid it, and this will be the maximum. agent, the escrow fund, certified public accountant verification of the escrow, and county certificates. We estimate that at around $59,000. And then, $10,476,000 will be deposited to escrow. That's to pay off your existing bonds. And then, there's a rounding amount. You have to issue bonds and blocks of $5,000. So, you always have a rounding amount. Okay, we looked at page five, which is your existing. One thing to point out, I guess, on page five is a couple lines up from the bottom. Under yield statistic, it says average coupon, 4.44%. That's the average rate of this particular bond, interest rate. Page six is an estimate of your new bonds. And you can see they'll start in 2014 and go through 2024. Again, the shorter the bond, each bond is a serial bond, so every year carries its own interest rate. So, we're projecting that the first year will be about 0.55%, up to about 2.8%. And the average coupon on that, if you look at the yield statistics, is 2.4%. Turning to page seven, this is a comparison, old versus new. If you look at the, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Five and six, columns five, six, and seven is the new debt service, the old debt service, and the savings. And you can see, over the years, through 2024, the reduction in your debt service payment is estimated at $1.218 million, present valued $1,022,000, for about a 9% present value savings. So, that's very good. Now, the next page is a graph, over the last three years, of a 20-year bond. This will have an average, weighted average of about nine point some years. So, it's more equivalent to a 10-year bond. However, even though the 20-year will show a higher rate, the trend is the same. So, I include this to show you the trend. And you can see, back in 2009, the interest rates were higher, and in October 2010, we hit the low point. And it came back down to that point just a few weeks ago, but it's on the rise right now. Now, hopefully, it'll turn and come back down for November 14. The final page is kind of a closer look at the last several months. And this is a 10-year bond, so this would be more reflective of what we would see in your average coupon rates. And you can see, in September, it was closer to 2%, and now, it's a little over 2.5%. But again, you can see how fast it moved. It can move the other direction just as fast, and that's what we're hoping for. So, you have a resolution in front of you. And what will happen is, after you pass the resolution, we'll go back and we'll structure it, we'll monitor this. So, if between now and the sale date, the market has jumped significantly, we might call you and say, let's postpone this. Because you don't have to do this as an advance refunding, you can wait. So, we'll monitor it. If we aren't seeing a good refunding, we'll call Stephanie and explain that, and then we can go from there.
And by good refunding, you mean if you're not seeing at least a 7% savings?
Yes. Unless there's a figure that the board has in mind that they want for a minimum. We do see boards that will say, you know, they'll pick a dollar amount of savings or a percentage and say, you know, we want to make 8% savings, and that's what we want. So, as we get within a few days of the sale date, if it doesn't look like we're going to do it, then we can react to that, too. But a 7% or above is what we consider a very good level.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jeff? John?
I've got some questions. I'm looking here at the numbers here on pages five and six. And it shows the amount refunded at, on page five, it says $10.2 million. On page six, it shows us refunding $10.6 million.
Correct.
Difference of $415,000. Where does that $415,000 go?
We have to go back to the sources and usage on page four. And you'll see that you have the underwriter discount, the cost of issuance. Then, you have to deposit more than what the old bond is in the escrow because of the negative arbitrage. Arbitrage is just an air word for profit, if you will. Because your investment rates are lower than the escrow rates, you'll lose some money on it. So, a good chunk of it is the negative arbitrage.
So, I count about $160,000 in fees here, cost of issuance, and underwriter's discount. That's about $160,000 in fees we'd be paying for this, is your estimate. And then, another $250,000 that you're estimating will lose on the, just holding the money while we're refunding the bonds. Is that where it's going?
Until they're paid off in 2014.
So, we have to hold on to the money for two years at less than the rate of interest that we're?
That's right.
Or three years? Almost.
It'll be paid off on the call date, which is 2-1, 2013, I'm sorry. So, a couple of years.
At least, more than a year, anyway.
Yeah, almost, a couple of years, right.
And we'll be paying more interest than we're receiving on the money that we're holding.
That's correct.
And based on that, we're spending, okay. And then, we are expecting to save, if I'm following your numbers, roughly $1.9 million in interest costs. If we add back that $415,000, that costs us, we're still saving roughly $1.5 million in interest costs?
No, on page seven, it would be $1.2 million.
Right.
Now, the balancing act is, you could wait for a current refunding, in which case, your negative arbitrage, you won't need the escrow account, that would be much closer to zero, because you might have 90 days that it's invested, up to 90 days. But the issue is, what are rates going to do over the next year, year and a half? So, if rates go up, then by waiting, your gamble would not have paid off. If rates stay the same, then you might have been better off waiting. That's the part we don't know. So, when the numbers look positive, then we bring it to the district's attention, and they make the decision from there.
Am I correct in understanding that we have the current refunding? We can do that no matter what? This is kind of a one-shot deal?
Yes.
That we can do this advance refunding?
That's right.
So, we have a chance to do the advance refunding now and save $1.2 million. And then, we still also have the opportunity to do the current refunding at some point in the, not, what am I calling? The next refunding at the call date, and we could also save money there.
Yes, but the call date will be moved back. Right now, it's 2-1, 13.
Okay.
When we sell the new bonds, we identify a new call date, and that was 2021.
Okay. But we're getting a next opportunity?
Yes.
Is my point. We're not losing that opportunity by taking advantage of this opportunity now?
Right.
Okay. Did you have more questions?
Yeah, so, at page seven, then, you identify, would you say, about $1.2 million in savings? Have you added in the $415,000 in estimated costs to get to that $1.2 million?
Yes. Yes, this is all-inclusive. It includes your negative arbitrage, it includes the cost of issuance, includes the 90-some thousand for the underwriter, which, again, we don't know if they'll take that until they actually bid.
But we're estimating it will spend $415,000 and estimating that we'll save that $1.2 million?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions? Okay, are we ready to vote on this? Board members, you have the form of the resolution before you. Resolution providing for the sale of general obligation refunding bond, Series 2011A, and covenanting on obligating the district to be bound by and use the provisions of Minnesota Statute, Section 126(c), .55, to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on these bonds. I'd ask for a motion. So, moved by Ellen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. Needs to be a roll call vote, right, Dana?
Awesome.
Aye.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Pritchard.
Aye.
Fennell.
Aye.
Strathorne.
Aye.
Fennell.
Aye.
Fennell.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
And I want to thank administration for, I think this is kind of the unsung story, really, that you so carefully look for these opportunities, with the able assistance of Ellers, of course. But, you know, I was just looking through some things. We recently, in the past few years, refinanced construction bonds and saved $2.2 million over the remaining 12 years of that debt, and I think this is just another opportunity. I mean, another example of how the district is looking for those opportunities to save money where we can. And I just really appreciate the attention to detail and the assistance of Ellers in that effort. So, thank you very much.
Would you share that, again, the impact on this has a direct and positive impact on the taxpayers of our district? Because, again, if we're able to come in at the level, and again, if you remember, I think it was a year or so ago, that we had an issue that we ended up postponing on at least two or three occasions, because we weren't at the point where we were going to get the right amount of interest savings to really make it worthwhile. Obviously, at the percentage that we are right now, and as long as that number stays relatively the same, this is a very, very good time for us to do the refinancing of these particular bonds. And the impact, again, comes directly back to the taxpayer, because it reduces the cost of the interest on the remaining bonds, which means when we look at debt service costs going forward for the next 10 years, we are basically going to be reducing those costs. And that has a positive impact on our taxpayers all through that block of time. So, I agree with you, Carrie, that, you know, the really important piece is that I think our finance department really watches and is very careful about watching for those particular opportunities, and with Aylers' support, determining when it's right, the right time to pull the trigger. But the real beneficiaries of this are the community, because it does have a positive impact on future taxes.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Our second item is the resolution appointing election judges for the November 8, 2011 school district special election. And the resolution appointing election judges has to be approved by us at least 25 days prior to the date of the election, so this is our opportunity to do so. I won't read the whole thing, but we have the list of individuals on the exhibit to the resolution, appointing them. And I just want to thank those folks for stepping forward to serve as judges in this special election, you know, special election in an off year. And I especially want to thank township judges who are coming into the polling places in town. I think it's really great to have a familiar face, someone who's familiar with the roster of voters in the townships, and people who are being consolidated into the five consolidated polling places. So, thanks to those folks for stepping forward to provide that service for the community. And we need a motion in support of that resolution?
So, moved. Moved by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ellen. Okay. And also, a roll call vote, Dana?
Fossom?
Aye.
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Fennell?
Aye.
Strathorne?
Aye.
And else?
Aye. Okay. Onto the consent grouping, and I just remind you, there were a few things in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Anything anybody wants to pull from the consent grouping? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So, moved. Moved by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Noel, thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear you. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Items for information, board members, we have in the table file, we've got the enrollment report as of October 1, and also a copy of Dr. Richardson's editorial or opinion piece to be submitted to the, or I guess it has been submitted to the Northfield News.
This afternoon.
Containing information about the upcoming school levy. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, other than just, again, as we looked at this, this, I think it was an opportunity to share with the community some specific information about the state funding that we've seen in terms of the last decade. Also, what we're looking forward to in terms of future funding, and the other things that have an impact on our ability to support the programs and services that we provide. So, information about the shift, information about the inadequacy of state funding, and also about the ongoing state structural deficit. So, this just gives people a chance to see, I think, some more detail in terms of factual information about the levy as that moves forward towards November the 8.
Very good. Future meetings coming up, we've got a regular meeting on October 24. And also, want to remind folks that at our first meeting on November 14, we're going to push that meeting time back to 7:30, so that, at 6:30, we can have the reception for our National Merit Scholars. And we're very excited this year, we have three National Merit semifinalists and eight commended scholars. So, really good showing for the Northfield Public Schools, once again. We're very excited about that. And that is just a wonderful event to showcase these students and honor their achievement and their families, and it's a good event. So, that's on Monday, November 14, at 6:30. I think we typically, that's filmed and shown on the NTV, so that's a lot of fun. And then, I also want to remind folks that we are going into closed session immediately after the meeting here tonight.
So, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Moved by Noel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.